All right, let's call the meeting to order. I want to welcome everyone to the May 7th Durango City Council Meeting. We're happy to have you all here and for those of us joining us on D-Gov, thank you for joining us. Just a reminder to everyone, we will have a couple of different opportunities for public participation tonight. You can speak during public participation and we have a couple of public hearings. So just to remind you, if you'd like to sign up for those, on the signs, on the forms right down here. And with that, Ms. Phillips, can we have a roll call, please?
Counselor Baxter?
Here.
Counselor Patine? Counselor Noesworthy?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Brooke?
Here.
Mayor Youssef?
Here.
We have one proclamation this evening for Durango Buddy Poppy Days and I'd like to invite Susan Alson to the podium, please, for to accept the proclamation.
And I will come and lead that. Hi. So we have a proclamation for Durango Buddy Poppy Days, May 23rd through May 25th, 2019. Whereas the annual sale of Buddy Poppies by the veterans of foreign wars of the United States has been officially recognized and endorsed by governmental leaders since 1922, and whereas the VFW Buddy Poppies are assembled by disabled veterans and the proceeds of this worthy fundraising campaign are used exclusively for the benefit of disabled and needy veterans, widows and orphans of deceased veterans, and areas' children programs such as Bicycle Safety Week and the Elementary Reading Medallion Program. And whereas the basic purpose of the annual sale of Buddy Poppies by the veterans of foreign wars is eloquently reflected in the desire to honor the dead by helping the living, now therefore I, Melissa Youssef, Mayor of Durango, Colorado, do proclaim May 23rd through May 25th, 2019, as Durango Buddy Poppy Days. And I do hereby urge citizens of the community to recognize the merits of this cause by contributing generally to its support by obtaining a Buddy Poppies on the days set aside for the distribution of these symbols of appreciation for the sacrifices of our honored dead. The officers and members of VFW Post 4031 urge all patriotic citizens to wear a Buddy Poppy as mute evidence of our gratitude to the men and women of this community who have risked their lives in defense of the freedom which we contribute and continue to enjoy as American citizens.
Would you like to say a few words?
Hi. I just want to thank you all for issuing us the proclamation.
Thank you to see him run the stores.
Yes, right.
Thank you.
And we have one presentation today from the city's Community Relations Commission on preparations to launch the Civility First Durango Pledge Program. And we have Suzanne Sitter, Lexi Stetson Lee, and Claire Atkinson. Thank you for joining us.
Hi, thank you so much for having us tonight. My name is Lexi Stetson Lee.
This is Claire Atkinson.
And we serve on the Community Relations Commission. We are bringing up and opening the dialogue about civility and what it means to different people in our city. Civility and behavior and tone is different for people based upon their experiences. I know that there are some new council members, and so for those of you who do not know us, we serve on the Community Relations Commission, which is an appointed commission whose primary purpose is to discourage all forms of discrimination and encourage social harmony among residents and visitors to the city of Durango. We were recognized as a diverse community and so the city created the Community Relations Commission in 2012 with the adoption of our resolution. The commission is comprised of five members as well as a youth appointee from the City Youth Engagement Program. We focus on cultural diversity, acceptance, and respect in the community because cultural diversity supports stronger communities. Inclusion brings all people's strengths to the table and diversity allows for the exploration of different ideas. So one of the things that we have put into place as part of the commission is the Civility First Pledge. This will be unveiled next week. We've decided to move forward and to present a Civility First Pledge for the city of Durango after surveying many residents who felt as if they faced discrimination on a daily basis based on their race, religious preferences, or sexual orientation. We have then continued to do some research with other communities across the nation who have implemented Civility First pledges and we felt as if this was a good step for the city. This is also in alignment with the commission's role mission and with certain activities of the city's Sustainability Action Plan and Lead for Cities and Communities Program. These programs provide the framework for actions that communities can take to help foster well-being, equity, and empowerment for all citizens. One of the things we wanted to articulate is that the Civility First Pledge is a voluntary pledge to promote these values within our community. Businesses are not required to take the pledge, organizations are not required, and there is no legal action or authority on our behalf. The traits that we think of when we think of civility are respect, sincerity, fairness, acceptance, consideration, kindness, responsibility, and compassion. But we are open to the idea that civility means different things to different people and so we see this as a process. We are starting a process to have a dialogue around this kind of framework and the good that it can do for all of the citizens here and all of those tourists coming to our town. Claire's going to speak a little bit about businesses and how they participate as a business owner in town as well.
Thanks, Lexi. So as Lexi mentioned, next week is our official launch for the Civility First Durango Pledge Program and we're inviting businesses and organizations to take the pledge as well as individuals. As it relates to businesses, we're asking businesses to take the pledge but also to put a decal. This is actually a sticker, but as an individual, you could put this on your water bottle or wherever you want, but the decal would go on a window that's outward facing so that visitors coming into the store will see this. And we would love to see this all around Second Ave., Main, North Main, and really populate with color this Civility First Pledge so that it really gets the peak of our tourism season, people talking about this. And as Lexi mentioned, it does mean different things to different people, so it is a process and a conversation that that will get started. However, we are partnering with other nonprofit organizations who do work around diversity training, nonprofit, I mean, excuse me, etc., that will be acting as sort of a clearinghouse and a liaison between individuals and businesses to share that information so that there's resources brought to bear for when there may be an issue or when people have questions or if they actually want to go deeper and build into their culture of business around diversity and inclusion. So, next week you'll see a banner across Main Avenue of the Civility First.
Thanks.
And we're going to have a large display in the Durango Welcome Center as well. So we invite all of you to wherever you see the stickers, wherever you see the decals, and if you don't mind, I think you may have somewhere, is that correct, a button that you can wear with us next week in support so that we can genuinely create a movement around this topic of civility, both in terms of how we communicate with one another across differences and how we relate and behave with one another. So join us, take the pledge yourselves, encourage other businesses, wear the pin, like us on social media, as well as look at the recent Durango TV promotion about the Civility First. So with that, if there's any questions?
Questions from council? Follow-up?
Nicely done. This has been a long time coming.
Yeah.
It's been a fairly short period of time we've been working on it for a good result. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to say also, I really appreciate the volunteer nature of this program, but I hope that we can encourage all of our businesses and individuals to take part in this program because the only way that programs like this are successful is if we all participate and we all dive in and sign the pledge, showcase our support, not only with our words but with our actions. And I would like to suggest that if we, those actions don't support our words, that we all stand up, step in, and demand civility first. I wanted to thank all the members of the Community Relations Commission and what a great start for this new council to focus on civility, so thank you for that. And you mentioned a banner and that was the other thing that I just wanted to suggest. I'll be bringing it up to council later, but maybe you can think about this, is I would love to have some type of banner here in this room that we can see every time we meet talking about civility first and remind us all about that. It should be, you know, I'm not sure if the banner for the Main Street is going to be appropriated here, but sometimes, some type of showcase of our support, I would love to do that.
We're happy to.
We'll brainstorm that later.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we're going to move on to the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda is intended to allow city council by a single motion to approve matters that are considered routine or non-controversial. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests an item be removed from the Consent Agenda and considered separately. Items removed from the Consent Agenda will be considered under Agenda Item Number 6. Ms. Phillips?
Item 4.1 and 4.2 are approval of minutes. 4.1, the study session of April 9th, 2019. 4.2, the regular meeting of April 16th, 2019. Items 4.3 through 4.11 are discussion and possible action items. 4.3, Concerns Resolution R. 2019-18, authorizing additional appropriation to the general fund for the Peace Officer Standards Training Post grant. 4.4, Concerns Resolution R. 2019-20, authorizing additional appropriation to the general fund for the Colorado Department of Law Post Grant and proposed project cost in excess of the amount budgeted in the 2019 budget. 4.5, Concerns Resolution R. 2019-21, authorizing additional appropriation to the general fund for a vehicle purchase in excess of the amount budgeted in the 2019 budget. 4.6, Concerns Resolution R. 2019-22, authorizing additional appropriation to the SERF for the replacement of a Durango Police Department Unit 296. 4.7, Concerns Resolution R. 2019-23, authorizing an additional appropriation to the general fund and the addition of a Library 1 position. 4.8, Concerns, the supplemental appointment of boards and commission members for 2019. 4.9, Concerns Resolution R. 2019-24, approving and adopting provisions of the City of Durango Emergency Operations Plan. 4.10, Concerns Resolution R. 2019-25, authorizing additional appropriation to the Airport Capital Improvements Fund for a terminal improvement capital project cost in excess of the amount budgeted in 2019 budget. And 4.11, Concerns, the Edge Town Homes, formerly known as the Mirador Two Town Homes Phase B as-built plan. Items 4.12 through 4.14 are requests for public hearings with the proposed date of May 21, 2019. 4.12 is to consider the Mountain Trace 2 and Timber Trails PD, Plan Development Rezoning, Right-of-Way Abandonment, and Plan Development Conceptual Plan. 4.13 is to consider the Preliminary Plan Review for the 238 East Village Project. And 4.14 is to consider amendments to Chapter 23 of the City of Durango Code of Ordinances increasing city sales and use tax pursuant to voter approval at the April 2nd, 2019 election for the purposes specified in the ballot question. And finally, Item 4.15 is final approval of ordinance O. 2019-13, approving the annexation and initial zoning for 224 Baker Lane, Durango Treadworks Incorporated, also known as Escalani Village, to the City of Durango and declaring an effective date.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Do we have any counselor that would like to remove an item from the Consent Agenda?
I actually would. I have questions on Item 4.5 and 4.9.
And I have questions on 4.6 and 4.7, as well as 4.5.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda items, withstanding the removal of Items 4.5, 4.6, 4.7, and 4.9?
I'll make a, yeah, make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda excluding 4.5, 4.6, and 4.7.
And 4.9?
And 4.9.
Was requested as well.
Oh, excuse me.
And 4.9?
And 4.9.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Brooke?
Yes.
Counselor Noesworthy?
Yes.
And Mayor Youssef?
Yes.
Okay, so let's review the removed Consent Agenda items. Counselors?
So on 4.5, which is the vehicle for the police department for the city, additional purchase in excess of the original budget, I was wondering why it wasn't in the original budget?
Yeah, I can answer that. The original budget did not include the position of, or the two positions of police services technician, so it was not in the budget.
Well, this is for the vehicle for the police services technician.
The positions were not in the budget, so the vehicle was not in the budget.
So are we funding, is there additional funding for the positions too, or is that coming out of something else?
The positions are coming out of other savings in the police department.
And the vehicle, yeah?
No.
And then my question was what consideration was given to purchasing a hybrid or an electric because I noticed that it's a Chevy Colorado 4x4.
Yeah, I'd like to ask our police chief to come up to the podium and explain what the vehicle is being used for and why we're selecting this vehicle.
Thank you, Chief. I'm there, counselors. So the police services technician vehicle we're looking at is Chevy Colorado. We think that that's going to meet the basic needs of those two service technicians that are going to be deployed in the field. So what we need is we need something a little different than a Tahoe, but we also need something that's going to have the robustness of a four-wheel drive vehicle, one for the conditions it's going to be driving in throughout the seasonal conditions of Durango experiences. We also need the bed of that pickup truck to be able to haul materials. Could haul cones, it could haul equipment that we can't get into the patrol cars such as bikes, because a lot of the duties that the police services technician is going to be doing is to supplement the patrol function and allow our officers to get back to the street and deal with criminal activities. So, you know, there's going to be bikes, there's going to be gear, there's going to be a lot of stuff that they're going to be putting in the back of the truck to bring back and deliver either to the yard, to our evidence lockers, and so on and so forth. They're also going to be assisting our traffic function because they're going to have to haul around speed trailers, which are quite heavy, and also, you know, the vehicles themselves require a lot of electrical equipment. We're going to have radios in there, we're going to have computers in there, we're going to have a light bar in there, they're going to be assisting on traffic crashes for traffic control. Currently with our, even with our Tahos right now, we have two batteries in each one of those and we have to keep those cars idling consistently in order to keep the electronics functioning on those vehicles because of safety equipment. We have to be able to communicate, we have to be able to give visual warnings to the public to make sure that, you know, that there's not additional crashes or affections that are going on in the street out there. So the electric vehicle is just not going to pull, it's just not going to be able to have the abilities, the capabilities that we're going to need in order to have it functioning correctly.
So when the budget was being developed and the two positions, were they not foreseen to be needed?
No, because at that time we were fully staffed with police officers. Nationally, there's a big crisis out there to get certified police officers. Right now, we're down seven positions. We've gone across the entire state trying to find certified officers that can fill our requirements, and we're not finding them. So what we've had to do is we've had to become creative and go into a different applicant pool and find people that we can fit the niche in order to provide the services that we need to the city of Durango.
So you're down seven officers?
Correct.
Which means you're not paying seven salaries.
Correct, that's where the salary savings is coming to fund these PST positions.
Right, well, so there, but theoretically, those two positions aren't as expensive as a sworn officer.
Correct, and that's what the reallocation for 2020 is going to be when we do our budget proposal.
So that means there's five positions of salary that's being saved.
Correct, yes.
Why couldn't that be applied towards the purchase of the vehicle?
Well, we're using that money to try to fund, backfill the additional positions we have that are there, because what we're going to have to do is we can, we're going to have to create in our strategy in order to attract positions to the department. So what we're having trouble with is finding certified people, or people that meet the standards that we have set for the department in order to best serve the community of Durango. So with that, we're paying scholarship positions for the fall. We're in the current process of testing applicants right now that are local, so we can quit bringing people in from the metro area here that are having trouble establishing roots for a long-term projected employee for the agency. So we're looking at finding people that are here in our community that are embedded here that have roots, and we're going to invest in them, because they do have the standards, they meet the criteria that we need. So we need that money in order to fund those positions and fund those scholarship positions and the tuition assistance that we're going to provide them to get them to the trained up to the level of what we're looking at to establish a long-term retention plan.
So I appreciate that, but if you're not able to fill all those positions, then you would still theoretically have some excess dollars in the budget.
Potentially.
So just personally, I would prefer to see that the available dollars in the budget right now fund this purchase and then if you need to come back with a request for additional officer money, that would be a different conversation.
I'd like to take a stab at that. When we're down officers, we pay more in overtime, so there's not the full savings. And we're hoping we can fill those vacancies.
In other words, that money should be left available to hopefully find some good candidates.
Right.
And the two positions, or the folks that you're hiring are, have a lesser quality standard of law enforcement capability.
They have a high standard, but they don't have the certification to back it up.
Right, so we got those two people that we're paying for, plus all the overtime that Ron just mentioned, and I haven't seen any savings in, in...
Well, we don't know that because we don't have the numbers, so...
Well, we did an analysis of where we project the police budget to be by the end of the year and what we can reasonably assume would be available for the truck. And you have to order the truck and buy it before you can put those two PSTs on the road.
And I would suggest that historically, trucks, vehicles are different than personnel. May not becoming a little bit more creative financing.
It's dollars in the budget that can be moved into any categories.
But when we add a vehicle to the fleet, you have to fund the entire vehicle and then there will be a lease transfer from the SERF fund. They'll be, every year, they'll be paying that into the SERF fund, so when this vehicle is ready for replacement, that money's already set aside.
I understand.
You get the SERF fund?
Yes, I do. I studied it.
Well, that's one of the reasons I say you just can't take a vehicle, that's a whole different category here that goes in, and it's not, oh, okay. I'm comfortable with that, yeah.
Did you have questions?
He covered my initial question, thank you for the additional follow-up.
Thank you.
Good thought. This is a truck, though, as I understand for, follow-up for crime scenes and accidents and that kind of thing.
Correct.
Not a cruiser type of thing that could be.
I just wonder with the, there's new developments in the hybrid and in the electric vehicles so that they're coming in much more robust cars and trucks, so I just was curious. I understand your explanation, I just wonder when do we actually do consider changing over to something that might be a little more fitting with our sustainability plan?
We could probably start that conversation now, but it's going to take some research and development. Because the last thing I would hate to have is us on the scene somewhere and all of a sudden the equipment fails on us, because that's not going to help the people we're trying to help.
No, I understand.
Yeah. I think we could certainly start that conversation looking at that for the future.
Thank you. Thank you. Discussion about 4.7? Do we want, you want to do it right now?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, can, do we have a motion then first? Is that what you're suggesting? Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Can we have a motion for Items 4.5 and can we do it at the same time, and 4.6?
We should go through them all.
Do it one at a time.
Okay. Motion for 4.5, please. Do we have a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve 4.5, which is the appropriation to the general fund for a vehicle purchase in excess of the amount budgeted in 2019 budget.
Do we have a second?
And that's Resolution 2019-20.
Do we have a second? Mr. Nelson, in this instance, can I second?
Um, yeah, I think you can.
Okay, I would second that.
Mayor Youssef?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Broke?
Yes.
Counselor Noesworthy?
Yes.
Counselor Baxter?
No.
Okay. I think moving on to Items 4.1, well, 4.6, we're on Item 4.6. Do we have a motion for Item 4.6?
I just had one question on that, which was, I thought I understood that it was a zero-sum situation with that, the expense with...
It is, the, so the police vehicle was involved in a fairly significant accident, I believe in January, and our self-insurance has paid out the cost of that vehicle, so it is just, the check was rolled into the account, we just need to appropriate it for the purchase of the vehicle to replace the unit.
Excellent. I just want to be clear, I wanted to be sure about that. So I would make a motion to approve Item 4.6, Discussion and Possible Action Concerning the Approval of Resolution, authorizing additional appropriation to SERF for the replacement of DPD Unit 296, and that's...
Resolution 2019-21.
2019-21.
I'll second that. That's good clarification, I might add, too, that some of these times, oftentimes we'll have an amendment to the budget, which is in this case just a procedural pass-through, in this case, an insurance claim that we put in the money and spend it quickly.
Mayor Pro Tim Broke?
Yes.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Noesworthy?
Yes.
Mayor Youssef?
Yes. Okay. Moving on, are we on Items 4.7 or 9?
Seven.
Okay, Items 4.7, please.
I just wanted to know more about the Patent Office and what benefit it gave to the residents and the community and the usage level of it, and then I also wanted to clarify that once Ms. Arment's fellowship was over and she returned, that there would, we would return to the previous level of staffing expense.
I'd like to ask Sandy Erwin, our library director, to come to the podium and...
And I'm also inviting Donna Arment, who will be taking the fellowship, up to the podium, who may answer questions as well. I would also like to pass to the counselors a pamphlet about the Patent Trademark Resource Center at the library. If we could pass those down.
Thank you.
So you were curious as to what the Patent Trademark Resource Center does. It's not a patent office itself. Actually, Patent Trademark Resource Centers are a network of libraries across the country. There's over 80 of public, academic, and state libraries that provide patent and trademark research assistance to residents. We were approached by the U.S. Patent Trademark Office back in August of 2017, asking if we would be interested in taking on this role. And we officially premiered our Patent Trademark Resource Center last May. What we do is we guide people through the process of researching patents and trademarks so that they can protect their intellectual property. We don't do the search for them, rather we teach them how to do the searching. It's actually legal for us to do the search for them. And we have access to specialized databases through the U.S. Patent Trademark Office that you can't get unless you go to a Patent Trademark Resource Center. We happen to be the only one in the Four Corners area. When we joined the program, the closest ones were in Denver, Las Cruces, New Mexico, Phoenix, Arizona, and Salt Lake City. A new one has also been in the last year in Grand Junction, Colorado. So there's three in our state. Donna, do you want to talk a little bit about some of the success that we've had?
Sure. We've had, I've had three in the last two weeks, so it's been great. Most of them are trademarks right now, so it's people trademarking a logo, branding their business, and they have to get in there and do their due diligence and see if it's already out there. And so we've been helping, you know, helping those folks do that. And then just yesterday, I was helping an inventor, he had already patented something through the process, and that's where folks, legal assistance helps them get through the patent process, because it can be very expensive. And that's the other thing that we do for... And that's the other thing that we do for folks, we help keep their costs down, because we help them do the due diligence as they're patenting out there, you know, at that level of work. And then he was looking for a trademark. This gentleman who had had the patent was looking for a trademark, because he was told by an advisor at SCAP to get a patent and a trademark, and then you have your licensing, and you have your device, and you get your full intellectual property support on that level. So it's just been a great, rewarding experience. I've been training a couple folks at the library, and that's one thing that I will be training, the trainers. It's not just going to be myself doing this, it'll be our library, our librarians will be out there helping to do some of this, too. So it's just, yeah, it's very rewarding.
Wonderful.
And we have been at the Patent Trademark Resource Center for almost a year. It will be in a year at the end of May, and we have given one-on-one assistance to 90 different people. And we've also done outreach to different conferences. Donna meets with the Small Business Development Center, and when they do presentations and classes for the public, we participate in that as well. So it's a great resource for our community, for our local entrepreneurs and business people who really need to protect their intellectual property. And so that's what it provides for our community, and Donna's going to bring back just invaluable information that she wouldn't get anywhere else. And I just want to say what an honor it is to be at new Patent Trademark Resource Center. They've been doing fellowships since the 80s, and it's one a year. So if you really think about that, they have recognized the amazing work of the Durango Public Library, and Donna in particular, on creating and developing our Patent Trademark Resource Center for our community. So really, it's quite an honor for Donna to be asked to do this fellowship. The librarian one position that would take her place, we are, Donna is a supervisory level staff, and so we have figured out how her major tasks will be distributed throughout our management team here at the library. And we'll need a librarian one who will just be a year-long appointment to cover a lot of our collection development duties that Donna and our assistant director take on, as well as desk duties that Donna also does while she is here. So that's why we need a librarian one, because it needs to be a professional-level position so they can do our professional master degree level work at the library. And we are hoping to start our recruitment soon, and we think it's a really great opportunity for new graduates of, with their master of the library science degree, to have a year-long job to really get into our field, but it's really open to anybody who has their master's degree. Hopefully, they can answer your questions.
Congratulations. Yeah.
Congratulations.
So I understand you're going to be in Arlington for the next year?
Alexandria.
Alexandria, sorry.
Our neighbor. Arlington's right up the street, so, yeah.
And the amazing part about it is that the U.S. Patent Trademark Office reimburses us fully for Donna's salary, for all of our benefits costs, and they give her a per diem so that she can rent an apartment in the area and cover some of her living expenses. So actually, the city is saving money by sending her to get this amazing experience and wealth of knowledge to bring back to our community.
Thanks a lot.
Congratulations, and thank you.
Thank you. Excellent.
Do we have a motion for item 4.7?
I can move to.
Go for it.
I move to approve of item 4.7. Do I need to read it? The librarian position.
You can read it, yes, if you can, to approve the.
Oh, it's on that one, too. Yeah, discussion and possible action concerning the approval of a resolution. Authorize an additional appropriation to the general fund and an addition of one library, one position.
And that's resolution 2019-22.
Second?
Mayor Pro Tim Brooke?
Yes.
Counselor Noseworthy?
Yes.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Mayor Yussit?
Yes. Okay, discussion for item 4.9, please.
Yeah, I had some questions on the emergency management plan, and first of all, a huge kudos to the staff that put the team that worked on that. It's a very thorough document. My question mainly is in the beginning, when it talks about the responsibilities of the city manager and the city council. And I was curious, because that left it pretty general. And my assumption would be that in an emergency or a disaster, it would fall, the responsibility would immediately fall in the sense of, without that area, the mayor would act, and then the premier pro temp. But it wasn't clear if we act as a council, voting on issues, things like that. So I was not clear on that direction. The rest of the items were quite specific as to how you would proceed.
Very good question. Mayor and city council. I'm Terry Heckler, I'm the emergency manager for the city, and that's a very good question. That's in Chapter 11, under Direction and Control.
Okay.
And we are currently, I'm working with Amber, our assistant city manager, and we're, I'm completely rewriting Chapter 11. And we will address the duties of city council, as well as our manager, Mr. LeBlanc. And we're about three-fourths of the way finished with that, but we're going to add some policy and procedures in there for the Emergency Operations Center as well. So if I could give a little bit of background, just how the Emergency Operations Plan is It's been my practice, I've been here 14 years, so it's been my practice to have a major rewrite of the plan every five years. And then our field service representative from the state of Colorado requires us to get approval by council, by resolution, for the latest version that we have on file. So we're in the process right now of doing the five-year major rewrite. And there's going to be several chapters, but that Chapter 11 that concerns city council and the duties of the city manager, that is going to be addressed pretty quickly.
Good.
Chapter 5 is also being redone, which is the general plan. We can share with you without any problems, of course, Mr. LeBlanc will, he will share with the council what your duties are. And I don't want to get into the weeds, if you don't mind.
No, that's funny. I just noticed it. It's good to hear it's working. You're working on it.
Yes, ma'am, we are. And one of the things that I think is real important for you to remember is that our Emergency Operations Plan is a living document. And so I think there was a question about, do we have a summary of the changes since 2015? Well, I do, as a matter of fact, if you look at Chapter 3 in there, if you've had a chance to look at it, it has a record of changes.
I saw that.
And I can provide anyone that would like to know those record of changes, what we changed. So I hope that answers your question about direction and control in Chapter 11. Mr. LeBlanc may have some further instructions.
Yeah, well, I think the, first of all, the council is invited to some training. It's called ICS 402, and that's coming up, I believe, on the 28th of May. But in that, Chapter 11, there's a delegation of authority during an emergency, the manager is the, the council is a legislative body, they're not an executive body. So that's a, there's a delegation of authority, and all of our department directors and also other key staff have been through all the required ICS training. And unfortunately, some of us have actually been through real-life emergencies. It's helpful to have people that have had experience in those situations.
I had two more questions, if I could. I noticed that there's a call-up list, and I, that, you know, you keep and the city manager's office keep. Does the mayor also keep a call-up list for that?
No, the mayor is not an executive.
Okay.
The council is five people. They're all equal, they form the governing body under the Council Manager Charter.
If I might add also, in the Chapter 11 there, under the duties of the city manager, it is his responsibility to communicate with council. And in the most recent incident that we had, where we had that big sewer spill out there on Highway 16550, Amber was acting at that time. And so what we did is we had her contact the council people that were available, and then they were kept informed. And that's the way that the direction and control is going to work. The city manager will contact the city council and keep you informed. And that's, that'll be a duty of his that'll be in there. It's already in there, but it's not real clear, like you said.
It's not clear.
So I hope that helps some. Would you like me to read the doc, or do you want me to just go straight to Dirk? And how do you want to handle that? You want me to read the documentation?
Unless the council does.
No.
Okay. Is there?
I just had a few questions on it. The last one is more of a protocol question, which is, I saw that, you know, there's a role for the sheriff, there's a role for the coroner, there's a role for the La Plata County Human Resources. What I didn't see was a mention or any communication with the county commissioners, recognizing that this is a city's response to an emergency. I recognize that, I just wondered the rationale for that.
Very good question, Barbara. You obviously have read that pretty thoroughly. So what I'm doing is, I'm going to take some of those, we can't say the coroner will.
Yeah.
You know, because we don't govern the coroner's office. Or we can't say what the sheriff will, or what the county manager will do. In the oldest version of this, at that, at the time that we first initiated this, we were just kind of babies, you know? We were trying to figure out how we were going to have direction and control. So those things were before my time, and they put the duties of those people that you mentioned, such as the BOCC and that type of thing. Certainly, we will work with them, and Mr. LeBlanc has designated what we call a MAC group, it's a multi-agency control group, and you'll learn all about that in the ICS 402 training that you're going to get. So I have taken out some of those, and like I told you, it's a living document, so some of those definitions and some of those people's duties have already been taken out of there. So when you get the new one, you'll see. I've added some. We didn't have anything in there for Parks and Rec, they take care of our sheltering. So it wasn't in there. We didn't have anything at the time, so we added that. So I've added maybe five different duties and taken out maybe three that we don't control.
In the state of Colorado, the county is a subdivision of the state. The city is an independent, home-rule city. So we don't have some of the functions that the state delegates to the county. And the ones you mentioned, coroner, I think you mentioned health.
Yeah.
And human services, and the sheriff, are all prescribed in statute by the state. So we don't have a department that handles social services, and the county has exercised its option on health by forming a district. So there is the San Juan Basin Health District, which consists of two counties, and they share the expenses to run that operation. And we don't have health. They are our health department, the coroner is our coroner. The sheriff has law enforcement responsibilities, but in addition to what police chief might have, he has additional responsibilities that pertain more outside the city limits, search and rescue being the big one, that he has authority over. But within the city limits, there's usually the police chief is the law enforcement head on an emergency response. But because we can get overwhelmed quickly, the sheriff and the police department will train to see how we would respond under an emergency situation. And sometimes it could be a sheriff's deputy who's first on the scene, even though it's the scenes in the city. And vice versa, it could be a police officer first on the scene in the county.
No, it was helpful. I just had a few questions, like I said, and.
Yes, ma'am.
I appreciate your work.
Well, thank you for asking those questions, and Mr. LeBlanc will keep you well-informed, and you'll get the latest updated documents, and as you know, it's online, so check frequently. I encourage you to look frequently online at the changes that we make.
I'd say, looking forward to the training again, yeah. When I took that training initially, I'd never thought that we'd have a Gold King's Bill. And, you know, in these disasters, fortunately, nobody died in that. It was not a tragic accident of sorts, but it was a huge environmental and ultimately a political occurrence.
And economic.
And economic occurrence. So I remember getting a call from Division 8 EPA Director. They also contacted appropriately the city manager's office, and they wanted to know, basically, they understood this was a political thing, and that hopefully we don't have any of those again, ever, but.
Well, as you will learn in the 402 class, city council does perform a very important function. But as Ron said, you know, we have the operations side, then we have the policy side. And so you are a very important part of the policy side. And we have a, we have a program for you, and that's what we're going to teach you, hopefully, in the 402 class.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Terry.
All right, councillors, can I have a motion for item 4.9? And do we need a member?
4.9 is R. 2019-23.
I can, a motion to approve the and adopt the provisions of the City of Durango Emergency Operations Plan.
Second? Yes, please.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Noseworthy?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Brooke?
Yes.
Mayor Yussit?
Yes. All right, we're moving on now to public participation. Is there anyone here for public participation? Do we have anybody signed up?
No one signed up.
And is there anyone else interested in public participation at this time? Okay, then I will not, we will not even go ahead through the reading. Just to remind you, though, going forward, I'll just say a few things. We do set this time aside for the public to provide comments or ask questions, and we welcome it. City council will not respond to the questions from the dais. We are limiting comments to three minutes, and audiovisual materials should be provided to the city clerk on or before the noon of the meeting. Okay, public hearings. Do we have anyone who wishes to speak tonight during any of the public hearings? If so, please write your name on the address form provided below. Moving into public hearings now, the city council previously directed staff to publish notice and public hearings for each of the hearings listed below. The following proposed ordinances or topics have been set for public hearing at this meeting. The issues that we deal with in this section of the agenda are of legislative or policy nature. Public hearings are an opportunity for citizens to provide formal input into the city council's decision-making process. The format for public hearings is organized to ensure transparency and fairness to all parties involved. The city council welcomes all public testimony, but requests that it be relevant to the issues at hand. Citizens wishing to speak during this section of the agenda shall sign in with their name and address on the form provided. Citizen will be called to the podium by the mayor to address the city council. Comments are limited to three minutes. The city manager will signal 30 seconds remaining by raising his hand. The public hearing portion of this meeting will end at 9:30 PM, unless otherwise extended by motion, and if necessary, will be continued to either a special meeting or the next regularly scheduled meeting. Okay, we're moving to items 8.2.1A, a public hearing to consider the South Fort, South Fort Conceptual Development Plan and Characteristic Master Plan amendments. City staff is here to provide a presentation of the facts.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Nicole Killian, Assistant Director for Community Development Department, and the staff on the South Fort Character District Conceptual Development Plan and Master Plan Amendment. I just want to orient you, because I know only a few members are part of the process that this came through in 2016. So the South Fort, South Fort Character District area is located just directly west of Three Springs, and it's near the new interchange for 55160. In this area, just a little blow-up, is about five different lots within the city, was annexed into the city of Durango. And at the time it was annexed, it was slated for regional commercial uses as part of the annexation agreement process. I just want to give you a little history, because it has gone through a process. So in 2011, the city did do a comprehensive plan amendment to allow for regional commercial uses in this area. And before we annex property into the city, we have to make sure. it. So that happened first, and then we annexed the property as well in 2011. It had two different zones. It was zone plan development, and then there was a piece of it that was zoned rural because of the topography, and that's just a portion of Lot 2. Then in 2014, the city, the previous city council adopted goals, objectives, and policies, or action steps. And one of those was Goal 4, which is envision Durango's sense of place by creating character districts, promoting responsible land use planning, and maintaining the community's sense of identity. Objective 4.1 under that goal was to create districts in the community that embrace the unique character of the area. And then the action step under that objective was to establish a character district for Crater and Wilson Gulch Drive, which we call the South Fork, based on the old ranch that was called the South Fork Ranch in this area. So in 2015, staff worked very closely with the two ownerships in that area, GRVP LLC, which is the Three Springs developer, and then also the Crater Properties LLC, which is the family who owned the South Fork Ranch. And we worked very closely with them to come up with a plan. We call it the Character District Master Plan. The city really got involved because the city constructed Wilson Gulch Road, and so we had a big stake in what was going to happen out here. We also wanted to make sure there was cohesiveness in the design, and that the plan was laid out for the future. So we looked at infrastructure needs, circulation needs, as well as the land uses under our regional commercial areas, to make sure that it, when a developer comes in, they knew exactly what would have to be done in order to develop the properties. So they had a whole package for them, essentially the document that kind of walked them through the steps that they needed to go through, and where infrastructure needed to be, rather than having these, all these meetings to lead up to that. They kind of had a nice packet for them. And so staff actually wrote the plan with the help of the two property owners. It did come through Planning Commission City Council in 2016 for approval as part of a rezone as well to create the PD for, again, I had mentioned the one property that has some topography. We wanted to make sure that the piece that's developable came part of the PD. And then we had our first amendment in 2018, and this was the area to the south, so parcel, or Lot 4, which had, currently has outside storage units. They, working with CDOC, because CDOC was very involved in this process because of the new interchange, and working with CDOC, there was concerns about what types of uses we'd allow on Lot 4 because of the access permit. That lot does not have access to Wilson Gulch Road because of the open space and actually the, the gulch in there. So that lot still has to have access off Highway 160. Because of that, CDOC had concerns about what uses could be allowed there for traffic purposes for their access permit. And so we kept it as just the, the storage units. But then in 2018, they, the creator sold that lot to a new purchaser who wanted to subdivide, and this came through Planning Commission City Council, subdivide the lot and allow for limited commercial uses. And so we had to work closely with CDOC to see which uses we could allow based on trips generation to access off of the highway. So there's some limited commercial uses that were allowed in 2018 for that Lot 4. So that's the only amendment that's occurred so far for this plan. Which brings us to today. So currently, this is the future land use map. So this is the comprehensive map that was adopted for this area. And it shows the public is slated for a church. The multiple use under a comprehensive plan has, is where we're going to put mixed use area. And then commercial was all based on, of a commercial regional. And then you can see the topography area is, is remaining rural. So this is our future land use map right now in place of the city. And then the existing conceptual development plan. So this, and I don't want to, so when we adopted the plan, South Fork Plan in 2016, we created this master plan document for the property owners. And as part of that, we also took them through the first phase of their plan development. So a plan development process is three phases. It's a conceptual development plan, preliminary plan, and then the final plan. Planning Commission and city council have to review the conceptual plan and the preliminary plans, and then staff can do the final plan as long as it meets the requirements that were approved. And so when we took the master plan through, we also did the conceptual development plan phase for South Fork. And so if they continue with the development trends that were proposed in 2016, they would just have to go through preliminary plan, which is a lot of engineering. We require full engineering to make sure the site works for what they want to do. And then staff just finalizes that with them. So they've had their conceptual plan approval, and that's why it's part of tonight's request. It's not just for updating the master plan, but we're updating the conceptual development plan, because they want to propose some changes for that. So this was the original conceptual plan that was approved in 2016. And what we did was we took our regional commercial zone, which was new in 14. That was a new zone for the city when we adopted the new land use and development code. And we took that zone and we divided it into two areas. We looked at a highway commercial and then a large-scale retail. And essentially, we just kind of severed that zone in our land use code and said, okay, these are uses that are more consistent with highway commercial, so we're going to put them in that location closer to the interchange. And then larger-scale retail, we put closer to the middle where we have a future signal. It's already set up for that in the future. And so we were trying to segregate the types of uses. All the uses in large retail and highway commercial areas had to meet like the setbacks and the height and the landscape requirements for the commercial regional zone. So we required them to both meet all those requirements of the commercial regional zone. We just separated the uses out. And as you can see, we've only approved one, not, again, not all of you were involved, but we've only approved one use out in South Fork. And that is in this highway commercial eight-acre piece right by the roundabout. We have a gas station coming in with a three-lot subdivision. The three lots have not been designated yet, but they could be some office, or some retail, or some fast food. We're not really sure what that looks like at this point. But that has, that's the only project that's been approved out here so far. And so besides the self-storage one that you saw in 18. And so we want to take, we wanted to take a step back and try and figure out what the market changes that have been happening. When we did the plan in 2016, we had high hopes for more big-box retail commercial coming to the city. But the market's definitely changed for that. There's a lot more online sales happening, and we're just seeing a lot of those retailers either filing bankruptcy or just not expanding their stores. And it's just really changed what we thought the South Fork Plan was going to be. And so working with the two property owners again, we looked at the highway commercial and the large-scale retail. And the property ownership in the large-scale retail kind of wanted to see some of the highway commercial uses allowed in that area. And then the highway commercial area wanted to see some of the large-scale retail uses allowed in that area. And so taking a step back and looking at it in the larger picture, they're, both of those areas still have to meet the regional commercial setbacks and height and landscape standards. So we wanted to provide some flexibility for those areas. And so the proposal before you tonight is just to combine those two areas and call it commercial regional, which is consistent with the land use code. So both of them can have the same types of uses throughout those areas. We still want to keep the mixed use in the north and also the church. So it's really just that central area along Wilson Gulch Road, looking at just allowing the regional commercial uses in those areas. And so what I did was just kind of the benefits of what that could do for this area. One is it can allow for more flexibility and the broadening of uses between all of those properties. And they can be more market-driven, rather than just, there's only a certain number of uses that are allowed there. They have a little bit more flexibility there. It makes the area more consistent with the other commercial regional zones throughout the city. And I just wanted to quickly show you our Highway 55160 corridor. This is the city's zoning map. And this is the Highway 5, or this is Highway 55160 corridor all along. So to orient you, this is Walmart, this is Home Depot, this is the mall, and then we've got some commercial along Bodo area. So the uses that we see right now in our regional commercial areas is the mall, hotels, gas stations, some office uses, and large retailers like Walmart and Home Depot. And so just in their strict, or their straight commercial regional zone. And so making the South Fork Plan a little more consistent with that would give it that straight commercial regional area along Wilson Gulch Road. So the types of uses that would be allowed is commercial uses, services, banks, hairdressers, light industrial uses, business employment opportunities, and also residential mixed uses. And I did put a very detailed list of uses inside the packet that went to the Planning Commission that you have as an attachment. So with that, I will say that staff, again, we've been working closely with the property owners, and we do recommend approval of this. The Planning Commission did hear this at their April meeting and also recommend approval of the amendment. There are some findings and conditions. The findings are that the conceptual development and character district master plan amendment is in conformance of the goals, objectives, and policies of the Durango Comprehensive Plan. And as I had showed you earlier, it will remain consistent with the future land use map. It does not need any changes as part of this amendment. Conditions is that preliminary and final plan submitted, so the second and third phases for these projects need to meet all applicable requirements and standards of the Land Use and Development Code, the conceptual development plan that will be approved tonight if changed, and also the master plan. And then they also need to meet all building and fire code requirements for the city. And then all fees do need to be paid when they do develop at that time. And then any written and verbal and graphic representations of the developers and representatives shall be deemed conditions of approval. So you can answer any questions that you guys have with staff?
Did, did we actually ever have a highway commercial zone? Or do we?
No. So again, this was just trying to break out that commercial regional into two areas.
Right.
The ones closer to the roundabout would be more highway-serving, but we've never had a highway commercial zone in this.
So this makes that map more, as you said.
This makes it more consistent with all the other zoning areas in the city.
You know, I, I like what's been done, the conversations that have occurred, and it allows for, I think, a greater mixed-use development as opposed to targeting things that don't longer exist, big-box stores, as an example. So I think it's a worthy amendment.
And again, all preliminary plans will come back too. So this isn't your only chance to see this. You will get details of the next phases when lots develop.
Well, as staff and the city council know, I had some questions about how do we promote businesses in this area that are sales tax collecting? And how do we promote businesses that have good-paying jobs? And what kind of policies can city council initiate so that staff can help generate those kind of things that benefit our community? So that the affordability, because that's where affordability comes from, it's the combination of good-paying jobs and places to spend your money. So how do we, how can, how can city council have policies that would promote that versus having businesses that are needed? But, you know, you don't want them to be overwhelmingly non-sales tax production or, or low-paying jobs.
Well, I'd say we've already done quite a bit from the city's perspective, because we built Wilson Gulch Road, which isn't very common. And also, staff is the one who took this through the initial phases. So any new development that comes out here, they've already gone through the first step, and they have the infrastructure in place to make their connections.
Sure.
So I think some of the bigger level policies have already been accomplished as part of this plan, which I think is awesome. I mean, we don't have that set up just anywhere for, for development. I think a lot of it was timing. The timing of this wasn't ideal with how the economy was changing and how the habits of people were, spending habits were changing. So I think that was kind of unfortunate, and we were a little bit behind on that. But Gary Whalen is here with GRVP, and I know I've talked with him plenty, and he's starting to get a lot more interest out there again, whereas it was kind of quiet for a while. So I'm not sure what's causing that or what's changing out there. But I do think there's been a lot already that the city's done to try.
I would be interested in hearing that, but I just had a couple more questions.
Sure.
But the implementation of Wilson Gulch Road, it does not encourage one particular type of business over another. It just encourages business or development. So that's kind of a general, broad conversation. So like, one of my questions was, how do we encourage, can we encourage, do we have a way to have a business park, or a tech park, or a place that encourages businesses to develop that have good-paying jobs? And rather than encouraging, I mean, even, you know, Walmart generally has lower-paying jobs. So how do we make, how do we do that? How do we encourage that?
Well, and again, I would say, I'd go back to the zoning. Regional commercial, it's broad. So we do, we do allow office uses by right. And Mercury Village is a good example. It's in one of our regional commercial areas. And so we do allow those uses in this area.
Yes.
I don't know if we're out there encouraging one use over the other, or just trying to set it up so all those uses have that opportunity to come into this area. You know, our staff doesn't go out and like promote businesses. We get what's submitted to us.
I understand.
And then we review that. So we try and set the plans up so that we can get those types of uses in there. I'd say Gary is the one who has to go out and promote it.
Well, one of my concerns is that we spent millions of dollars on Wilson Gulch Road, and starting in 2020, we actually have to start making, the city has to start making payments. So I'm, I'm interested in how do we generate revenue to make those payments so that we don't have to, you know, take the money from somewhere else out of the budget or something to do that.
Yeah. Well, if I understood your first question too, is, does the city have a role in, call it dictating or encouraging, incentivizing higher-paying jobs, certain sorts of businesses to occur in a certain place? Currently, we don't. We don't. I mean, I'd answer that as no. And so is that a role that we should look at as a city goal?
I think it'd be great.
And, and that kind of thing, and?
What kind of policies can we put in place to?
Right.
And what kind of groups then work with that?
But I think we, in recent history, we just heard from Region 9, in terms of that's an opportunity zone, not an enterprise zone. So there's a lot of folks, in addition to the city, that are working on exactly that issue, along with the Economic Alliance and that kind of thing. But historically, I'm there, we, you know, as we enter that debate, and I'm, I'll be there with you, but, you know, there are a lot of people who think that's a bit of overreach, on part of government to dictate what kind of salaries would result from jobs like that. But as you, but talked about, I mean, there are certain, you know, Bodo was never envisioned as a high-paying job district. You know, when it was created, it was just metal buildings and service industry stuff. But it's, you know, fostered a lot of great paying opportunity jobs.
Jobs.
And so to repeat that success in some other location, I think is on the goal. That's if you read the Postmaster Plan, the number of, you know, there's, there's a number of areas where that can occur, and should occur. So, but back to this issue, I, you know, I think this is, this opens it up for a little bit more of that, rather than just a highway commercial truck stop, for example, which wouldn't be one of those high-paying jobs necessarily.
No, but it would be a sales tax revenue generally.
Right. Yeah, which is our first priority, so.
Any other council comments?
No, you answered. My question was that it, you could have some kind of light industrial park there.
Yes. Thank you. I'm just going to go through my list here, and I'm going to open the public hearing after that, and if we, just see if we have any presentation from the applicant. No?
And technically, the city's an applicant as well.
Okay, 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 okay.
We were going to get some words of wisdom from Gary Whalen, I thought.
No.
No?
Um, do we have any public testimony for this hearing? Anyone wishing to speak? Okay, I'm going to close the public testimony portion of the meeting. Do we have any, any further questions by council? And any responses from staff? No? Okay. Close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
Let's see if we can find it here. I would move to recommend approval of the proposed South Fork Conceptual Development Plan and Character District Master Plan Amendment, with the findings and conditions as outlined in the staff report.
Second.
Councillor Brooke?
Yes.
Councillor Baxter?
Yes.
Councillor?
Counselor Nisworthy?
Yes.
Mayor Yussa?
Yes.
All right, moving on to eight point two point two, another public hearing concerning the approval of purchase, of a purchase contract between the City of Durango and Volunteers of America for a one point six-two acre parcel in Three Springs to be used for low-income senior housing. City staffs podium for presentation.
Good evening, Madam American Councilors, Kevin Hall, Assistant City Manager. What we have before you tonight is pretty much the culmination of several years of work with the Volunteers of America to establish a income-restricted fifty-three-unit senior housing project on this parcel of land that the city owns. Currently, the parcel's three acres. It was dedicated to the city by GRVP, the owners of, and developers of Three Springs. Their dedication to the city was predicated on them receiving credit towards their affordable attainable compliance agreement. This project does that. We've gone through a significant process on this and the staff report tried to provide some uh links to past documents that hopefully gave you a little broader perspective because what you have before you tonight is almost an administrative act, the final act of what has already been agreed to on a number of occasions. Most recently, the, in March, we did the approval of the preliminary plan for the project, the subdivision of the property, as well as uh the adjustments to a purchase option agreement. They've essentially met all the requirements of the purchase option agreement. So, what needs to happen in order to transfer the land? The purchase option agreement becomes a purchase agreement. Uh, in order for the city to transfer land, we have to do that by ordinance and, and that requires public hearing. So, uh, we have this before you to consider that this final step, which is to approve the agreement, that that would allow us to, to a first reading on the ordinance tonight. That's a little bit unique than what we typically do on a, a first reading because we don't wanna assume there's gonna be an ordinance until there's an approval. However, I will tell you that VOA has been working very diligently with the city now again for two years. They're in the home stretch, they received the low-income housing tax credit, they've received their preliminary plan approval, the subdivision's done, they're in their final steps on financing and they, they, uh, this, the reading of ordinances and then the final publication of ordinance. If we do it the way we're proposing here on May thirty-first, they can essentially get everything finalized. So, uh, we're asking you to approve the purchase agreement this evening, that will allow everything to move forward. Certainly here to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from counsel? This has been going on for quite some time. Then I'm gonna officially open the public meeting. Um, no applicant in this case or developer, correct? Okay. Um, any public testimony for this hearing? Anyone wishing to speak? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing portion of this meeting. Any additional questions by counsel or responses by staff? Going right through this one, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Do we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the, for approval of a purchase agreement between the City of Durango and Volunteers of America for Lot One A in Three Springs to be used for low-income senior housing. And thereafter, under separate agenda item at this May seventh, council hearing, consider uh detached ordinance approving said purchase.
Second. Ms. Phillips?
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Brookie?
Yes.
Counselor Nisworthy?
Yes.
Mayor Yussa?
Yes.
Moving on to item number ten, introduction of ordinances. Mr. Nelson, can I have you read ten point one and give us a number?
Yes, this, this is ordinance twenty nineteen dash fourteen, an ordinance authorizing the transfer and conveyance of Lot One A of the Lot One subdivision of Three Springs Village to the Volunteers of America National Services for the purpose of building low-income senior housing, declaring an effective date. Obviously, this is a follow-up to what Mr. Hall was just presenting.
So, we have a motion for that or discussion? Start with a motion if we have one?
Uh-huh. Go ahead. I'll make a motion to approve an ordinance authorizing the transfer and conveyance of Lot One A of the, of Lot One subdivision at Three Springs Village and to the Volunteers of America National Services for the purpose of building a low-income senior housing and declaring an effective date. That would be resolution twenty nineteen, two thousand nineteen dash twenty-four?
No, it's fourteen, ordinance, this is an ordinance, ordinance twenty nineteen dash fourteen.
Twenty nineteen dash fourteen. Thank you.
I'll second it. Ms. Phillips?
Counselor Nisworthy?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Brookie?
Yes.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Mayor Yussa?
Yes.
Moving on to item twelve, please, council reports and actions. Councilors, do we have any updates that we'd like to share at this time?
I do. I would like to share that I went to the Fort Lewis College commencement uh on April twenty-seventh and it was such a wonderful experience and I um recognize what an asset we have with them and the community. But I did wanna just share with the community uh some statistics on the, the college. So, the college student body as a whole is represented from forty-eight states, seventeen countries, a hundred and seventy American Indian tribes, and Native Alaskan villages. And in this graduating class of twenty nineteen, ten percent were Hispanic, thirty-two percent used the Native American tuition waiver, and twenty-six percent of the graduating class identified as first-generation students. So, I just think it's a wonderful resource for us and um kudos to Fort Lewis College for pulling off three commencements in two days.
Thank you. Any others? Well, go ahead, yeah, go ahead.
Uh, I, I just wanna mention something without stealing the mayor's thunder here.
No, go ahead, please.
For those of you that are training for the iron horse and after the iron horse is over, we have a significant uh conference being held in our community with potential significant ramifications to our community, and that is the redevelopment and reinvestment symposium. And the genesis of this is our longstanding approximately six-year interest, eight-year interest in urban renewal for certain portions of our community. And uh, as such, uh, we're gonna have conversations, conversations among public and private sector leaders throughout the state, identifying opportunities, designing quality projects, and solving financial challenges of, of any kind of redevelopment within our community. In, in this case, we're gonna be looking at one, uh, one methodology, which is urban renewal. And that'll take place on, uh, starting on Wednesday, May twenty-ninth, there's a, a opening salvo at the Rochester Hotel in the Secret Garden for, for meeting some of the folks that are coming to our community. Uh, then it really kicks off on Thursday, May thirtieth with an all-day session. Uh, and this will be posted on our city website. But uh, just love to have people, uh, community leaders and uh people within the development community attend. It goes all day Thursday, uh, and it can, uh, ends up on Friday. We have a mayor's uh, uh, invitation-only, I guess, mayor's uh breakfast to, to kind convene those leaders and, and uh tie up the, the thoughts that have occurred over those, over the past day and, and ends at eleven o'clock. And that will be at the, during the public library. So, just look online if you're in the development community, you have interest in making a significant contribution to the vision of our community, this would be a great opportunity for you to do that.
Thank you.
So, Barbara and Chris Patina and I attended the Boys and Girls Club lunch fundraiser a while back. It was wonderful and what a great organization supporting children's families in our community and um just providing with a safe, good fund place to be and learning experiences. So, I just applaud them. It was a fabulous, it was very interesting. Um, I'm gonna break tradition a little bit here. I uh, uh, being this is reports and actions. So, um, almost three weeks ago, on April seventeenth, I requested from um the city the, um, some information about the, the staff positions that city council manages and directs, which includes the city manager, the city attorney, and the municipal judge. Um, the information that I requested was employment contracts, goals and objectives, job descriptions, and three years of employee performance evaluations. Um, six days later, this city council, and I requested this for the entire city council, and the reason why I requested it was because I'm new and I'm, I'm responsible for managing and directing three employees and I need to know what their jobs are and what the agreements are with them. So, six days later, the city council received those employment contracts. Um, it appears through conversations that specific goals and objectives do not exist for those three positions, nor do job descriptions. There are some duty, list of duties in some of the contracts. Um, and so far, even though it has been suggested that they would be forthcoming, we have not received any performance evaluations of, of the past three years to know what has been happening in those situations. Um, so, two weeks ago, I made a request to have this item on the agenda to discuss what kind of agenda, whether it's a city council meeting or a study session, what have you. And so far, we have not been able to make that happen. Um, Durango, the City of Durango is a ninety-two-million-dollar organization. It's inexcusable that the manager of that size of an organization does not have the goals and objectives and a job description. I put that responsibility on the city council. The city council needs to move forward and create that so that the city manager, the city attorney, and the municipal judge know what they're, how they're going to be measured on their performance. There need to be um smart goals and objectives. And by smart goals, that's a term that's used in human resources and, and other organizations. It means those goals and objectives need to be simple, measurable, achievable, realistic, and timely. It's imperative that the city council take the responsibility to remedy the situation, to take accountability for it, and to prioritize it so that we know where the city's going, how we're going to get there, and whether or not we're doing it by measurement. So, I would like to request, and I know we can't have a discussion about this because this is not on the agenda, but um this needs to be done now.
Is there a process for actually, do we make a request for a special session or what is the?
Of course. Uh, you, you have, this is personnel matter and it's an executive session and an exec, executive session only.
I think let's, I, can we ask Mr. Nelson about responses, please?
Um, I, I think that it depends on, I think, performance, um, you know, job duties and those kind of goal-setting, that's certainly appropriate for a public discussion. Specific items related to performance would be something that would be appropriate to handle in an executive session if council so desired. But my understanding is that, um, what Counselor Baxter is asking for is more action on process to set up a review process and to set goals than you are to do a performance evaluation at this point.
Correct, absolutely.
So, that's appropriate for open public discussion.
Great.
Not necessarily tonight because it hasn't been agendized, but.
Right.
At a time when it can be agendized.
Which, which would also include past performance evaluations in a public forum?
No, that, again, I don't.
Yeah, that's, that's an executive session. Anything process-related, we will do an open session. And anything personnel-related, we will do an executive session. But um.
I wasn't asking for an evaluation to be done, but I was asking for history so that I would know what, what progress has been made and what expectations have been made for expect.
And uh, just to follow up, is it okay if I follow up with that? I think that you will be receiving the remain, the rest of that information shortly. Um, and I believe that we, I would hope that as a council, we might be able to follow up on some of these discussions that you're bringing to, to reports and actions tonight and uh, even in an open session, possibly even in our upcoming retreat. And if you're done, I'll go into mine then.
That was the last item.
Okay. Um, we have a city council retreat next week. It's May sixteenth and seventeenth. This is a very important time for council to get together and talk about priorities and relevant issues that are very important to council that will drive our focus and energy for the coming year. These are open meetings, they're open to the public, we welcome everyone to attend. Thanks to our attentive community, these meetings will be uh recorded and minutes will be taken. Um, so if you're not, if you're not able to be there in person, these will be online. Both days, it's, it's, it's May sixteenth and seventeenth, both days start at seven-thirty AM. On Thursday, we go to four-thirty and on Friday, we go till noon. We're still in the process of setting that agenda. We have a retreat facilitator who is contacting each of the councilors and working to draft an agenda that will come to me last and then I will review it with staff and we will move forward on getting that agenda posted for the community as soon as possible. I also wanted to let you know that our youth engagement program, or what we used to refer to as MIAC, Mayor's Youth Advisory Council, had a very well-attended Jive Fair on Monday. Um, this is the, for jobs, interviews, and volunteer experience. It's um, this event has really, really evolved over time. There were forty-seven vendors sharing their different jobs, internships, and volunteer experiences for students. It was last Monday. It was a great day because students could go right after school for early release. Um, and MIAC did a great job, or YDP, um, did a great job of putting this on. And I did wanna let our, our teens know that we are currently recruiting for our youth engagement program, or MIAC, um, for next year. And teens can apply online through the website. This is a really great way for our students to get involved in local government. The last day to apply is this Sunday, May twelfth. You can go to our website, durangogov.org/boards and click on applications on the left, scroll down to MIAC. We will have nine new MIAC positions open next year, which is significant because we have a lot of graduating seniors and nine positions on our boards and councils. We hope to see students apply. And then one more time, I would like to remind everyone to please sign up for and get actively involved in our Civility First pledge program. You can, uh, next week again is our official launch. You can sign up and take the pledge, individuals, hopefully all of us will, as role models at durangogov.org/crc. And with that, um, I wanna thank you. Thank you for joining us this evening. Thank you for joining us online. Our next city council meeting is May twenty-first and until then, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Boom.
Do I have to go?
Yeah. Excellent, excellent.